We're cooking with gas?
Yeah.
Okay, let's call the meeting to order. Do we have any minutes from reports received in five?
No.
Nope. Commissioner Committee Liaison Reports, Meetings and Events.
We've got some local foods, local places, training stuff going on, seminars today, tomorrow. Wilsters Membership Meeting tomorrow at noon, Mill Bottom. And then Eastside Business Association Friday, Economic Development Team Friday, L U Casino Night Saturday, they still got tickets available for that, so.
We've got them at the store.
There you go. You know where to find them now.
Yep.
That's all I got.
We've got the Shelby Fest Downtown Friday and Saturday. Hidden Spaces, Secret Places Sunday. Kent Torrance Spring Concerts Sunday. And yeah, I've got that Chamber E D meeting too Friday, so. Nothing, okay. Let's go bids and contracts. Bid discussions and awards 2015-14 Furno Cots.
You should have the bid tab in front of you. The total cost was $118,337. We put this out for bid, we did not receive any submissions for alternate equivalents, so.
You got that Jennifer?
You got a copy for us?
Yeah.
You're on.
Five, right?
There it is.
Three, three cots.
Three cots.
Three cots.
Three cots and there's some other miscellaneous equipment.
Are the, are we replacing these in stages, is that?
Correct, this is a phased in replacement of the current cots we had. These are the power cots. I don't know if we discussed this way back in August, but these are phased in. We're doing three now, three next year until we get up to the 10 for total replacement.
Is that what we budgeted?
Correct.
I thought we were doing six.
So initially we were going to do two, and then Chris you said go ahead and do a third, so we're doing three now, three next year. To the total of 10.
What is the weight on our cots? I, when I went to that chiefs meeting, Matt Schofield was talking about they had to transport a 700 pound man. Do we have just one special cot that we?
The weight limit on most cots is around 600, 650. There is an LBS attachment system that ups the weight to, I believe, 750.
Okay. Yeah, that, that just amazed me, I thought, man.
Still have to lift it.
Yeah.
So is that all the cots that we have is 10? Is that how many units we have? How many, how many trucks do we have?
10, yes sir.
Got those hulk loaded up and Avis bar trucks don't have to show up then. Right?
Don't have to, or?
I'm just stirring. Don't give me too much time sitting here and think because the wheels are turning. Shouldn't need it though, they got, y'all got a nice weight room over there now, don't you? Or a EMS?
What's that Jennifer?
Y'all have a nice weight room over there now, don't you?
We have a little area that we can, you know, try to mill the other.
It's their fault. They're giving me too much time. If we're still waiting, we talk about some difference here.
Jason, baseball?
How did he throw a no hitter and get a two nothing loss?
They literally made it to first base, a walk and hit by pitch and stole their way around both pitches.
He's like second on the list on all time wins at J C too.
Put him up there by himself.
I saw it, I got this on my computer.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. Show you how you can do that.
Do you want to make a motion to approve that?
I was, I thought we were waiting on Chris. Oh, you're good?
Oh.
I'm making motion, that's a bit, I wanted to bid. You not wanting to do them?
No, I'm just being difficult.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, aye, okay.
Okay, it's gonna be, okay. 2015-15 Life Pack 15.
Okay, we got one response back from Physio Control again, this is Soul Source. The total for the hardware is $134,574.65. We do have service contracts available on this. They offer one, two, three, and four, which is essentially a two, three, four, and five beings that they have an initial one-year warranty. You can see the prices there. Between year one and two, you're saving a little bit by doing that, but otherwise it's the same cost and you're basically just locking it in.
What did we think these were going to cost?
The unit cost is 29 and 149 and.
Right, what did we think they were going to cost?
About 32, that's what I was trying to say.
Okay.
32,000.
And the, the service contract is, is to replace the batteries and?
Service contract covers maintenance, any service issues with them, calibrations, all of that throughout the year.
So as we look at the two-year onsite comprehensive coverage, that's, that's the total cost for two years?
Yes, the extended, yes. And they're due annually? It's not an upfront cost?
They can only lock us in for one year at a time though. So it'd be one year with the.
They lock, that's what, that's why there's the different ones, the four-year, they're locking you in, so you're in the contract, you just don't have to pay it until the beginning of that year.
We won't be able to be in a contract for five years though. It's one year at a time, we just have to renew it each year, right?
That's what they offer.
We can do multi-year contracts, okay?
Well, no, because it's subject to appropriation.
Well, yeah, subject to appropriation, but it's, but it's, but it's renewable.
Well, renewable is different from multi-year. Renewable is the option to renew every year.
Right.
But if you say, we're signed a five-year contract and we're locked into a five-year contract, the way a private entity would, being the government, we're, we're subject to appropriations. On the past, what we've done is in the auditor statement, where Chris attests to the money being in our budget, that it's subject to annual appropriation. Now.
So for if any reason you would not appropriate the money in the budget, we would not be locked into the contract?
So. It kind of makes it meaningless. Unless they give us a better deal, so.
Yeah.
Because they can't enforce it if you don't appropriate it.
But if they would agree to the, to a multi-year contract, I mean, it is a little bit, saves us $84 a year.
Sure, we could try it, we have to make it clear though, that if we don't, if you don't appropriate it, then we're not going to honor that.
But if, I mean, if we were to issue it now, I mean, we actually can't, how can we do a full year?
What do you mean?
Well, our budget ends December.
Well, you'll pay it by the end of December.
So we'll pay it all upfront?
Just for the first year. At the original cost plus the one-year onsite coverage.
The warranty is for the first year, so the one-year is actually for whenever we purchase it and then the next year, yes.
And usually when a maintenance warranty comes with the product for the first year, we include that in the sales tax. After that, in the capital purchase, I'm sorry. And then after that, it goes into the regular operations budget.
Okay. What did we have approved for capital for EMS?
He requested, if I'm thinking right, Mike, this was the $43,762 that you had imagined each unit would cost?
Correct.
So we did put all of that in there.
So we're, we are well under the initial request that they get submitted back in July almost.
Yes.
We like that.
There's what you thought we were going to pay initially. So there's a substantial difference between 43,000 and 29,000.
That, that 537 included the remounts on the, is that right? Wasn't on the screen, I couldn't see it, something, I think.
The ambulance capital is separate from the other capital monitor.
Is it?
And the actual budget?
There's a different line item for ambulance.
Yes, we did put the ambulances in separate. Of course, we already purchased one of those, so that capital part. The remaining now is a 488, 488,000 right now. But there are some other purchases coming. One we just did.
I think anytime you can save us money, it's, it's good, it's a no-brainer.
Yeah, that, I mean, the problem that I have, and I know you guys are physio and I'm not trying to pick on you at all, but once we start down this path, I mean, they know we're going physio, what's, what's to keep them from these, being 50,000 next year? Nothing.
Well, we did piggyback off of a cooperative purchasing contract, so they based their bid on that. It was, they responded to our bid, but it was based on those numbers, so it's not, as long as we're eligible to piggyback off of that, it's not like they had the option to really stick it to Cole County because they know that we're a physio county, you know?
So it's a state contract or cooperative agreement?
It was a cooperative agreement, yes.
Here it is.
I just don't like having, not having a choice, but anyway, I just think that that's... But I don't know what we can do about it.
But there's nobody else that bid on it, that's, I mean, that's pretty.
We have multiple companies registered on the county side that do the medical supplies and equipment, and why no one put an alternate forward, I don't know if there's just none really comparable that are available, I, I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, I mean, you put it up for bid, you only get one, one bidder.
I'd like to be that one bidder.
Well, I know, well. But I like the fact that it's less than what we had projected, so.
So what if they projected 100,000 a unit?
Well, then I think we would be.
Well, you can project whatever you want, so, you know, it's always good to project high, but.
That's when you kick them to the curb. When they come in there and they gig, you tell them piss off.
Yeah.
So I may we approved the contract with the physio, who's the contract with?
Physio Control.
I mean, we approved the contract with Physio Control for the five life pack units.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Let's do 2015-16 Lucas, and then we're probably going to skip the agenda around a little bit.
Did we need the?
How long did we want to do the maintenance agreement?
On that last one, that was just approved.
So it'd be, basically we're talking about two different contracts, I would assume.
Well, we can just do a PO.
One, one for a service, one for service contract and one for, for the units themselves. Is that right?
For the maintenance would be the contract, and then the PO will be for the equipment.
I don't know, you see this? Do you have a preference on? I mean, if we do a one-year, that's like doing two years because we got a free year, right?
Yeah, one year is covered with purchase.
Or if we do a two-year commitment, that's like three years.
I don't care if we do the one-year and then, but we're basically tie ourselves into the five-year, because we can always get out of it. We just not appropriate the money. It's not going to get any cheaper.
The, the five-year doesn't really do anything more than the, than the two-year.
It's just locking it in, yeah, in case it goes up.
But, but it could go up, I'd almost do the five-year.
The, the five-year is what I would recommend if you're locked into a price and.
I'm fine with doing that, it's, they realize, if we want to, we have an out.
Yeah.
Or we don't even have to tell them.
We got an out, so.
And if we're not clear with that with them, and they in fact may want to put a provision in there, if you don't, then you need to pay whatever, you know, to make up for what you have.
Buyout clause or something.
Something like that.
And then it's fine.
But we'll, we'll see when we talk to them.
I'd just tell them we can't do the five-year thing.
Yeah, by law, but I'd still.
Tell them we're going to change some words around if they have problems with it, oh well, okay.
I tell this to the five-year.
Okay, I mean, we approved the, the four-year onsite comprehensive coverage service contract.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now we'll go to 2015-16 Lucas.
The chest compression system and accessories, we put this out for bid, we did receive one bid, it was actually for an alternate. I think James wants to talk about the alternate that was submitted. We did check, and Physio Control is also the manufacturer and sole provider of the Lucas system, so that would be Soul Source, they have a letter to that effect if you guys do choose to go that route. Basically, for the purchase of five Lucas units, the cost is $74,457.23. And then, they do have a service contract, a four-year for that would be 23,800. So the alternate's quite a bit cheaper, but I don't think it's, it's equivalent, and I'll let James talk to that.
The alternate system that was bid was a pne, was a pneumatic device, as opposed to a battery operated device. You've got to remember in our ambulances, we're very limited on space, so to carry an extra oxygen tank in that, that weighs probably 15, 20 pounds, that we would have to carry around and strap to this patient to be able to use this device versus just being able to use a rechargeable battery that just does, just a little bigger than our hand and is smaller, much lighter weight. It just works a lot easier for us, I mean, we have very limited amount of oxygen that we can carry on that truck. So the pneumatic device just does not work very well for us. Battery power is just much easier for us.
I don't see the alternate for us on here.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not following any of, I mean, I have this sheet, I don't, I don't see any.
The alternate, yeah, the alternate is the, see where it lines up with the alternate, so it's the wheel mini.
Okay.
So the alternate's the only one you see. Again, the Lucas was 74,457.
So where's that, do you have a copy of that?
Yeah, right here.
We got a copy of that too, Jeff, or?
Do you want me to just make photocopies for it?
I don't know, if it wasn't attached.
Everything that's outlined in that quote is what's listed on here. And then the total came to be 74.5.
And that's for five of them?
Right.
Yeah.
When we talked about it, what was the price that you were estimating?
With the Lucas devices, when we talked about that, I can't remember the exact date, but we did not have a figure for that.
So we don't have anything in budget for it?
We do have it in budget.
Okay, what did we budget for it, I guess, then? I remember talking about it, but I don't remember how many we talked about or what the price was back then.
Yeah. Yeah, if I remember right, forgive my memory, but I believe with the cost savings with the initial thought of the monitors, we were able to include the Lucas.
And I think that's been conversation since this initial budget.
Correct.
And I have that right here, sorry.
The Lucas price was included in on the initial one, Debbie?
On the initial budget, it was that last year.
Yes. You old breakfast, sorry. Gary L G A R Y. Just wanted some attention, you couldn't stand sitting there quiet, could you?
And we had a couple of other meetings post this initial, initial submission before the budget, and the Lucuses were, I don't know how you want to say it, to the first submitted for capital replacement.
So we'll do five now and five?
Correct.
Yeah.
What was the total capital bid?
Total that's in there now is 4, 488,000. Originally it was 500,000 without the vehicles.
Originally it was 500 without the vehicles? So what were we going to spend 500 on?
I'm not sure if we just kind of.
Is that just a number that we put in there?
Yes. I'm pretty sure that, probably do that.
What did the, what did the first remount cost us? Roughly?
102, maybe, right?
Some large tier.
No, I think it's under either. Oh, that's right.
100ish.
97.
97.
97, 9.
Can you go back to that capital sheet or that EMS worksheet? We had 218 for the P monitor.
Yes. Different, so, to be honest, we could have just budgeted those two amounts in capital because the other was in, that would be, I just ran it through. Again, not knowing what may come up through the year.
So are we going to get a trade-in cost on the, or is that, that included on these life packs?
The life pack fives have trade-in value, $5,000 apiece. We need to keep those until all the monitors have been replaced. So we'll replace, we'll have that reimbursed next year.
So you're going to keep five extra?
Yes.
We have 10, life pack 10, so we're going to get five, so five life pack 10 would go and we get new 15, so we're going to have to hold on to the other five to maintain mission case built. If we trade in all 10, we're going to have to get 10 new monitors, so we're trying to phase in the.
Just a note, then, the subtotal would be the total if we're not trading those in right now? Because that is calculated, less the trade.
So there's a trade, there's a trade-in cost there. So we're going to hang on to all 10 and then they'll take 10 on trade in the next cycle?
Will we buy the next five?
Yes.
So the total's 160 roughly?
Yes.
And these, uh, Lucas monitors, they, they have a one-year warranty too?
Yes, they come with a default one-year.
And then obviously, we would recommend the extended coverage based upon your coverage you're going to Smith with over agency here.
Go back to that sheet one more time for me.
Is that sheet different that you got there, Chris? Does it got more stuff on it than what?
Uh, no, I was just looking at what Jennifer gave me, but you should have it on your computer, I just can't get mine to work, so.
No, it's not on there.
Oh.
The only attachment I had was the back of the one.
The attached should also be on the.
I only got one page.
Was there a trade-in value on the other cots, or are we getting any trade-in on those? Okay. And the cot total, cot cost was about 118?
Yes.
That, that 537 that you have there, is that what we had total for capital, or you said 500,000 plus the ambulances?
We had 500,000 plus ambulances. This 537 does include the 200,000 up here, but the actual budget was the 500.
I'm just trying to make sure that I got the numbers right.
The ambulances are, they're in a separate line item, so we had discussed when we submitted the budget, do I still include the ambulances in that request? Yes, you should have. So with the ambulances being in a separate line item, you can take that 200 off that 537. But in the capital right now, the, the number that's plugged in there was around 500, correct?
Yes.
So roughly we got 700,000 for capital and ambulances?
Yes.
So. You got anything else that you wanted to buy this year?
I used your whole allowance.
What we still want, but we don't need, we don't have this year.
But we already talked about this when we were talking about the capital for the year, right? That's why we said go ahead and bid it, because we. That's why we said go ahead and bid it, because we didn't ultimately approve it yet, but we said let's bid it.
Let's bid it because we had enough in capital to do that.
See, I didn't find this one yet.
No, that one was not.
So this is basically, basically, yeah.
Say again, sir?
I mean, is this, are, do you have anything else major that's going to be?
No, as we have discussed continually, the big ticket items are always ambulances we have.
Okay.
The dispatch and the remodel have been taken care of. The next big ticket item are always the, the equipment, which includes the monitors and the cots, which we're phasing in over two and a half, three years. Other than normal things of replacement, big ticket equipment items, this should go down from there. Can you squeeze in that boating equipment there?
Maybe if you have some kind of heart monitor on it.
Am I going to have a heart attack? I, I submit a needs-based budget, not a formal budget, so.
Well, we're about four fifty-three with the cots and the monitors and the Lucas things right now. So that should come down a little bit next year with, uh, trade-ins. But then you'll have a service contract probably come and do sometime next year, correct?
If we, and when we jump ahead of you, if we do fourth quarter this year and first quarter next year, we're buying all ten lots. If that makes sense?
Okay.
So when we do the service contract, if we do an all-ten first quarter of next year, that covers everything. Does that make sense, Chris? So that way, we're not having to double-dip for service contracts on five and any other five we get fourth quarter and first quarter, we do it all at once. That does make sense, Chris?
What's, what's the, uh, what's the life expectancy on most of that stuff? I mean, replacement, interval?
Yeah, it, it is subject to the next lead quantum in technology. It's like computers and everything else, five years?
Five years, okay.
Yeah, they start becoming obsolescent as soon as you get them.
We've got drones we're looking at now, robots, things of that nature. I mean, it's, technology is, is quantum when it moves forward. Okay, what are we working on?
The Lucas. So if you want to go with the Lucas chest compression system and not the Wheel Mini, which was the alternate, you would need to reject all bids. And then we would need to just make a decision to, um, do a sole source cooperative purchasing for the Lucas. Physio basically missed the bone on that. They just didn't submit a bid. It was an oversight, so we would need to reject all bids. Because we received the one for the alternate.
Which wasn't what we were bidding.
Correct.
Yeah.
I guess I missed all that.
The one on your, do you have that bid tab? The one reflected on here is for the Wheel Mini.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, from Midwest.
They're the only one that submitted a bid.
Midwest Medical, correct. They're the only one that submitted a bid for this, so we would need to reject that. That letter that I had, and the reason it wasn't included on the bid tab, is from Lucas, which is what we bid, indicating that they are the manufacturer and the sole distributor. That is sole source, and it is on cooperative purchasing contract, so to make the purchase shouldn't be a problem. It's just a matter of rejecting this bid and then making the approval to go forward with that purchase.
So we didn't even have to bid it in the first place?
Right, but I mean.
Well, it gave you an idea of a comparable and.
We, we did bid it with the or equal or.
And there might have been some, some other company out there that.
Well, we got a bid and it's a hundred thousand less, right?
Well, that's.
Chris, I think you wanted us to go solicit.
Right.
Because you knew that it was on a cooperative purchasing, but you wanted to go, wanted us to go solicit.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I just wanted to put it out there, yeah.
But if the bid we got is not what we're asking for, then.
Correct.
It's.
Well, it is what you're asking for, it's just not what you want, is what I understood, because it's got a bigger tank that you got to deal with, right? So we could technically go with this, it's not going to be what you want.
The replacement, the Wheel Mini, is not in service anywhere in Missouri. It is not a comparable brand. It is out there, it's a very, very cheap, generic, twenty-year-old design. The Lucas is up to date, meets all the codes and specs, and has documentation and, uh, performance data behind it, whereas the Wheel does not.
Why did Lucas not bid?
They just, it was an oversight. They have, yeah.
We have a new salesman that's in charge, and it was an oversight.
I'm okay with going with the Lucas.
Are we just going to reject? We need to reject the, the single bid we got.
Then you get what you pay for. I used to have to.
Yeah, I, I agree. I don't disagree with that. I mean, the problem that I have is that, you know, here we specked out their product. You know, we gave them ample opportunity to turn in a bid, and, and they didn't. And so, you know, I really, I mean, the, you know, I know what we want, I know all that stuff. But, you know, this was a gimme for a salesman, really. A gimme, this is what I want, turn in a price. And, you know, the competition turns in a price, and, you know, if this was a public works project, we'd be saying, you know, who, who, who got it? And so, you know, I.
Well, play devil's advocate on that though. They've got it on cooperative bid already, so why should they bid it? Say, there's our bid, right there, you see our bid. It's on cooperative bid, so why am I going to go through the dog and pony show? If you all want them, take them, it's, you can reject it, we're sole source. I don't disagree with you. I think they should have submitted something, or sent a letter and say, we're not going to bid this, it's on a co-op. You all want it?
Like Mike or James said, it's, it's a new guy. I mean, it really, it wasn't a proverbial slap in the face, it was just an oversight, and he just didn't get it turned in, so.
Well, I'm not buying that. I mean, new, new guy always got to do is sit it on a fax machine or whatever, here's my price, or whatever, put it in an envelope.
Try and order.
I mean.
But we can reject, we can reject this bid right now and just ask Lucas to submit it.
Tell him to come up and apologize to us, his feelings.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have to.
Yeah, we'd just be spending the hundred whatever bucks advertising.
Okay, okay, okay.
Depends on how long it is.
So we're just rejecting the bid from the Wheel and sole sourcing via the cooperative purchasing agreement. That is a renunciation motion.
There you go.
Judge?
I, I don't know if I can make a motion, but I'll make a motion to reject it.
You can say I'll entertain a motion.
I will entertain a motion to reject the bid and, and go with Lucas.
And go with the sole source for Lucas?
The sole source for Lucas.
Well, let's, let's, let's just make a motion to reject all bids.
All right, I'll make that motion and to reject the bids first.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
We don't need to act, because you can go out.
Do we need anything? Yeah, I mean, we don't, it's on cooperative purchasing and it's sole source, the product they want to purchase. We're just.
If it's sole source, do we have to advertise for sole source?
We shouldn't because it's on cooperative purchasing.
I'd just use a cooperative purchasing is what I would do.
Correct, that's my understanding.
Okay, okay.
So you probably need some direction, so I move that we use the cooperative purchasing program to purchase five Lucas cardiac monitors. Okay.
Second, should you do the service agreement with it?
I haven't yet, haven't yet.
Okay.
I thought we all should keep that separate, because it's going to be kind of a separate deal.
We keep it separate.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and then I'll move that we do a five-year, or a four-year extension service contract with Physio for the Lucas cardiac monitors, is that right?
Cardiac. Compression device.
Luca, Lucas compressions, compression devices. I don't have any of this in front of me, so.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Debbie asked if we could shift the agenda around a little bit and go with the Joy Howard on Randall Drive. Do you have any problem, Christie, with? Okay, I'm sorry.
She doesn't have any problems. She's, she's getting paid.
I know, but I.
Well, I want to introduce Joy Howard. She helps with all the bond issues.
Morning, Joy.
And you guys read the email from Tommy Stigman on the, the new NID that we're working on for Randall Drive. Um, I don't, I was just going to let Joy explain to you that. I mean, you guys know the project. Larry was up here to, to get any questions about the project itself.
I think I'll spin if you don't mind.
Use a microphone, though, if you, because I, I've been getting grief that they can't hear us.
I may want to sit down here.
I'm, I'm doing, I'm doing what I'm told.
It doesn't amplify, it just records.
I'm doing what I'm told.
Yeah, yeah, it doesn't amplify, it just records.
Yeah, please.
Can, can we push it up so maybe, can, does it help if I'm?
It doesn't matter.
If, if I'm here?
Yeah.
Okay, let's do that.
I think that's great.
It's a compromise.
Yep.
So I wanted to spend just a little bit, explain to you who I am, so what I'm presenting as far as the NID makes a little bit more sense. Um, I'm what's called an independent financial advisor, or at least I, I have been for the twenty years that I've been working, but since last year, I would probably be called a municipal advisor. Because my role was more clearly defined under Dodd-Frank. Um, and it went into effect by that definition by the Securities and Exchange Commission, so my role is completely regulated. Um, under the Securities and Exchange Commission, as a municipal advisor, uh, my whole role in life is to act as a fiduciary, uh, to governments when they're incurring debt. Although I do other things as well. I do capital planning, I do reserve policies, I, actually, I worked with your county doing that. But mostly day-to-day, I'm working on bonds and, and lease financing. Um, I'm called independent because I'm not associated with any broker-dealer, like Edward Jones or Steeple necklace, and I'm not associated with any bank, Commerce Bank, UMB. I strictly work as an independent financial advisor, doing what I said, day in, day, day out, all of the time. So that's what I do. Uh, the municipal advisor rule also made very strong lines between things I do and things banks do and things bond attorneys do. So if you're doing a NID financing, you have to have ninety-nine point nine percent of the time unless you have a permanent on-staff attorney. Um, you would have to go outside and have what's called a bond attorney help you put together the documentation, that it's the, a legally binding obligation. Um, and that usually you want an opinion as well, that it's tax exempt, under both federal and Missouri law. So the county has already taken that step as far as engagement of Gilmore and Bell, who you've worked on as bond counsel on, I think, probably all of your transactions. You are not required to have a financial advisor like myself, but then you would be trying to figure out what it is you're doing, and if you go to, um, Gilmore and Bell and say, what rate should we be paying? They're, because of these strong lines that are legally set out, they're, they could probably send you a, oh, this other issue was done, but they're not supposed to give you any financial advice whatsoever. So that, that's where I step in. I'm, I'm here to give you the financial advice, um, and I have experience giving you the financial advice that, and so here I am today. I know very little about this NID financing, um, but I thought it would, it's a good time to come out and talk to you about it. Even if you said, oh gee, I, we're not going to do this NID, I haven't met all of you, and so I really wanted to take that opportunity to reacquaint myself to you. Um, I also, I guess one other thing I might mention is that, because there's all these wonderful rules and regulations, uh, you're also required to, in connection with your outstanding debt, you're required to do annual financial reports and filings, um, every year, under a governmental website. So every year, since I started working with the county, I work with Debbie doing the necessarily reports and filings. So I am involved with the county, and it's to a small degree anyway, and as I was saying, so I wanted to get to know you. So having said all of that, um, I believe you were presented with a contract, um, for the NID. The little bit I know is that it's very small. Um, and it's small, it actually creates certain kinds of difficulties. Which is ideally, if you're doing a very small issue, you want to be able to do what's called a private placement. Which is to find a local bank, it could be like Central Bank, UMB, Commerce Bank, um, to purchase the securities. The problem is, is that most banks like to have obligations that are ten years or shorter. Now, I don't know that you've gone down that path yet. Most NIDS are twenty years. So, um, I brought you an example of a very small NID idea. This isn't the smallest. I'll tell you about the smallest one, too. I brought this one because it's most similar to the issue that you're talking about. It was done for a county, it was done recently, and it was not done as a private placement. They did twenty-year financing, and we had to go out and find an underwriter for this issue. Which means going through the whole process of preparing not only your bond documents, but an official statement, which is like a corporate prospectus. This is the cover page from one. We also had to get a rating, and we just didn't have much choice. If we wanted to do twenty years, we, we couldn't get a bank or other company that does a private placement to purchase it, so we had to go out and do a whole-blown public sale. So if you look at my agreement, um, I drafted it as an either-or, but there is also a third option. Tell me, am I going too fast here? Okay, the third option, and I can't remember which of you raised it with Gilmore and Bell, but was, was, because you funded it yourself. And the answer is yes, in which case you wouldn't need a bank, you wouldn't need a underwriter, you wouldn't need an official statement or a rating or this very complicated process. It would just be, um, you all writing a promissory note, I assume your general fund, or Capital Projects, I guess it could be. But, yeah, writing out whatever fund it is that's going to do it, you write a promissory note to yourself. Um, and then establish the terms of it, whether it's ten years or twenty years, set the NID assessment, and then, you know, hopefully have the money come back every year that you need to pay that off, like you would with a bond issue, but it's, it's you basically owning the debt as opposed to a bank or, or individuals. So the agreement that I gave to you pretty much covers all three different approaches. The one thing I might want to say about self-funding, in terms of not having a ton of work, not having annual disclosure, not going through the rating process, all, all the things that make a public sale really complicated, you would be avoiding that. And so in that regard, self-funding is an extremely good idea on, on a financing this small. However, I, I want to talk to you about the smallest NID I ever did, which, which is not this one. Um, it was for the city of St. Peters. Now, this was several years ago, and I'm trying to remember, I think it started off around two hundred thousand. Was, it was for a subdivision, it was to repair the subdivision streets. Are you all familiar with city of St. Peters?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so it's, um, in St. Charles County, it's actually a very affluent city. They have a, a very substantial reserve. The two hundred thousand dollar NID is, was a drop in the bucket for them, and would have affected their overall reserves, their overall credit standing, or anything else. But they decided that they didn't want to have the precedent of not going out and formally issuing bonds. Um, that it opened the doors for other subdivisions to come in, knock on the door and say, do this for us and, and do it as a loan. Because the, the city would obviously scrutinize harder something that they're going to go through this huge process, actually. More of a scrutiny, more of should we do it or not, than if it was self-funded. I don't know if that makes sense to you, but it's such a huge process. And so they wanted the, um, developers to be aware that if they came to the city for a NID, it wasn't going to be funded by the city, they would have to go through this process with them. If that makes sense, because who's ever involved with you, it's, it's, I, it's a process for me, it's a process for you, it's a process for. it's a process for the developers, it's a process for the homeowners, you probably know what I'm talking about. Now, the, the last thing I'll say about St. Peters is that, once you get all of this put together, and, and everybody's agreed to a NID, and all the documents are basically in place, there's a thirty-day period when the home, homeowners, in this case, or property owners, are allowed to make prepayments. And in the case of St. Peters, our two hundred thousand dollar NID, after prepayments, ended up at fifty-four thousand dollars. So, they had gone through this whole huge process for their fifty-four thousand dollar NID. And that's what makes it the smallest one I ever did. Anyway, that's everything I have to say, other than answering your questions, either about me, what I do, about a NID, my contract, whatever you'd like to talk about.
So, I was just curious, what, you talked about the whole elaborate process, and, and so I assume if you have to do a whole lot of work, it costs a sizable amount of money. So, I was just kind of curious.
Well, basically, in my contract that I presented to you, it was my understanding, talking to Gilmore and Bell, that you had not received a petition yet. And I'm not even sure if you've decided for sure if you were proceeding. So, I set the contract up, so once you have a signed petition, you would pay me a thousand dollars. That would be fixed, non-contingent. We'd do capital planning, we'd go through the assessment, and at that point, you could decide even which method of financing you want. If, if you do nothing, either abandon the project or self-funding, that's all you would owe me.
Right.
If you do a private placement, tell me if I get these wrong, because I'm not looking, you would owe me an additional three thousand dollars upon success.
Okay.
And if you did, and I'm going to have to pull it up, if we did a public sale, it would be eight thousand. That's in addition to the one thousand.
Right.
The one thousand, then plus either three thousand or plus eight thousand.
So, if we do bonds?
Pardon?
You mean if we do the bonds?
If you, yes. The three thousand is if I put together a request for proposal, and I was able to get like a bank to buy it and not go any further than that. And then the eight thousand dollars is if we decide we have to go down this route.
Okay.
Get the rating, get an, an underwriter, do a public sale.
As you guys know, all of this money, Gilmore, Bell, Joy would all be added to the NID that would then get passed on.
Gilmore and Bell's cost?
Yes. What awesome.
But their cost for being passed to the homeowners.
That's right.
Yeah.
So.
So, and so would mine.
Right.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
That's what I meant, all of it's gone, they're paying for it all. So, do they have a say in how we do it?
Well, so, go ahead and answer your question.
Their main concern would be that when they, when they get assessed, they're going to care a lot if it's ten years or fifteen years or twenty years, because that major impacts the amount that they pay each year. And similarly, they care a lot about the interest rate. And there could be significant, the Jefferson County, by going through this awful process of getting a rating, I say awful, I mean, it's cumbersome, you have to do a lot of work. They, they got a phenomenal interest rate, much lower than if they had gone through a pub, a private placement with a bank. So, even after the rating fee, by going this method, it was less, but there's this, their issue size is probably double what yours is. But, my point was that the payers care a lot about that. They care a lot about the rate, because it's going to get passed along to them. If you self-fund, I think you need to talk to attorneys about this, but I think, believe their position is going to be that you have to pay the going-market rate. And that would be for me to make a judgment of what's going on in the market. Is the rate right now three percent or four percent or whatever, and that's what you would put on your promissory note. But, the, the payers, they care a lot. They care a lot about the maturity, and they're going to care a lot about the rate, because that's what they pay.
I don't think we should get into banking part of it. I don't mind helping out with the bonds and the NID, but I don't think that we should self-fund it. I think it's a bad idea, but.
Well, so, the, the reason that I brought that up is because I had met with one of the property owners out there, and I believe that he's willing to write a check. Maybe.
He's going back at this point, that may not be the option.
Yeah.
Originally, one of them that owned the majority of property was talking about that, but I'm not sure if that's still on the table.
So, is that, is this three point eight-five percent rough, I mean, just on this sheet, is that annually, or?
That, that was for the.
Or is that over?
For the entire issue. So, yes, annually. And this was done in two thousand thirteen. The, the actual going-market rate on an, on a double-A security, right now, is probably around three percent. The rate right now is lower. That's not to say you would get a lower rate, though, because for the, for the underwriter and the purchasers, they, they kind of have to go through the same, "Oh gee, this is really small, this, you know, this isn't the best issue that we could be buying." So, there's, there is a premium rate associated just from doing a small issue. But I didn't, I didn't know if you were trying to get some idea if this was comparable to today's rate.
Right.
I think.
I, I was just curious. So, if we did, if we did this in-house and did it ourselves, we could save a three thousand dollar fee to you, plus an eight thousand dollar fee for the public sale? Is that roughly?
I think you should make an assumption with me, you're saving eight thousand. Because it's three thousand if I could go private, or eight thousand.
Okay, it's three or eight.
Yeah, it's either one, and given the fact that in this case, I mean, I would try and do that for you, but given that Jefferson County ended up having to do the public sale, you need to at least think, if you're not self-funding, potentially, it's going to be eight thousand more.
Okay.
And then bond counsel, just so you know, when I talked to Tony Stegeman about this, she made an assumption before she talked to me that you all would be doing a, a private placement. So, her fee, if, if we came back to her and said, "Gee, we weren't successful with the private placement," her fee is going to be more than what you've seen.
What, what's roughly that, her cost, Debbie?
I don't know, because the going rate on, on a small, on a relatively small issue is probably around twenty thousand. But I assume she would try and bring it down from the norm, because it would be so small. So, I wouldn't count, I, I'm just saying, don't count it. Somewhere, somewhere, I think, between what she's already quoted in twenty thousand, but I don't think it would be that much. I don't think it would be that bad.
So, if, if we did do it privately, why couldn't we add those fees in there regardless of whether we did it or not?
He would.
So. So, we.
Yeah, we're not saving it, they are.
No, they'd still pay it.
No, I mean, if they're saving, we're not saving any money by doing it either way, because it's going to, the cost is going to be going to the project, they're paying for it.
No, we, if we funded it.
If, if you funded it, I'm, my assumption is that you would still absolutely want to have bond counsel, and that their fee would be the same as if they were doing a private placement. Because you still have this huge set of legal documentation and hearings and things associated with NIDS that you would have to do. So, that fee, I think, is a good fee for bond counsel. My fee would definitely be limited if you did inside funding, would definitely be limited to just the one thousand. And there's, if you, if you go outside of the county, there are other fees that you would pay as well. They, in this case, they, they paid for the bond rating. So, if you had to do a public sale, not a private sale, but a public sale, the cost would probably be around an additional ten thousand dollars.
I think in-house, doing it, you're setting the precedent for, or doing it for the next NID.
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what.
Correctly, especially because the cost of issuance is one, another thing to consider as far as precedent.
We've got two on the horizon besides this one.
Okay, are we setting a precedent? We do, do this, and the next one comes and says, "Well, you need to do it for us, too." I mean.
Well, but that's.
Can I say something else?
That's, that's where you don't.
I have no idea what your timing is, but on the rating thing?
Yeah.
The, the rating agency doesn't look too much at the underlying NIDS as far as credit. They don't look to see who, who's going to be paying the bill. They look to the county as your ultimate ability to make the payments. So, if you had three NIDS, that, or even two, that you could do at about the same time and get the rating, the, the rating you'd only have to pay once, which is, just I'd mention that, if there's any way that you can bring them together. And similarly, when I, if I have to do a public sale and write this document, this is a long document. Debbie knows this is, a very long document, it takes a lot of time. So, that document, for me, the cost would go way down. And I don't know what savings you'd get from bond counsel, but just food for thought, that if you go down this path and you can team up other issues, it would really help.
Well, as far as timing, I don't have any idea. You know, the one of those market battles out there, recently got the information, and I don't know if Rush Creek, they've talked to us about it in the past, about possibly doing a NID.
So, we've got possibly, potentially, three NIDs.
This is only one that landowners said, earlier said go.
I like double, I buy a lot of double-tax exempt bonds for myself. It's, it's, it's a good, I got jail bonds, I, if I come over, I, do I get a suite over there, or?
It's our little big room for you.
Okay.
It's in the old jail.
I don't, I don't think you ever set a precedence, I mean, I just don't, I don't believe in that. I mean, every situation is different. I mean, if we could do this one, and, and, you know, basically, still, I mean, the, we could set the, the rate would be the rate, but I mean, all these costs, we pass on to, to the homeowner, and maybe we, we keep some of those funds, and, and if we're making more money on, on these bonds, or that we're loaning them the money than what we're making at the bank, I mean, yeah.
Well, basically, it's, it's a loan, yeah, we're not, we're not giving them money, but.
Right, yeah, we're loaning them the money, I mean, we're just paying for it upfront. But, I mean, you're not going to, I mean, even at Central Bank, we're not getting, I guarantee it, we're not getting three percent.
As far as on your.
But it's going to be a twenty-year?
It's just a philosophy, do we want to be a bank of Cole County, or do we want to do services and have a reserve? That's up to you guys, as far as that goes.
And that would be the problem, is at some point, depending on who comes in the door, at some point, you'd have to say no, because it would start impacting reserves.
Absolutely, yeah. Absolutely, you're not going to be able to do all of them. I mean, you could have ten of them come in, well, yeah, we're not bank of Cole County, but we, I mean, this is, what, three hundred and fifty thousand, roughly? I mean, that's an amount that, that is very doable. And, you know, instead of paying for some of these other costs, you know, we just, we save that money in, in some of those costs, is the way I see it, I mean, I don't know, maybe I'm, I'm missing something here, but.
We're not really saving it, because it's going to be passed on to the.
Well, rather than paying ten thousand dollars for a bond sale, we, we just put that money into the, the NID. I mean, these are the fees that are associated with the NID, roughly. You know, we don't pay it, we keep it.
I don't think you can do that. If you're saying what, if, if you're saying, "We're not paying it, but we would have, so we pass it along," I don't, I don't think that's an option.
Why, why should they get, get the?
Well, that's part of.
Get the advantage by us doing it?
Exactly, that was part of the problem on why St. Peters chose not to do it. Because by law, they.
So, why not split the difference?
By law, I think they can't, you can't. By law, you can only pick up what you, what you've actually spent. Thank you. Forgot that word this morning. Yeah, and so that was the problem with the precedent, is, oh, you paid for all the costs of issuance effectively on this, this one, but not on this one, and it, and it won't be a choice, it, the costs are what the costs are.
So, could you set your own rate?
You could set, you can set the own interest rate as long as it's reflective of the market. Then that's why Tony said I should be involved with you, even if you did internally, because you're going to need someone like me to go out and look at the market and tell you what rate to charge.
Especially going out.
So, and so I'm just asking questions. So, you know, we, we decided we were going to do it in-house, but it's going to cost you another half a percent over market. Could we do that?
It probably would be, because yours wouldn't be rated. But I would have to make a determination of, of market conditions.
Right.
What does a unrated NID look like versus a rated NID?
Right. So, we could say, "This is a small amount, we'd like to do this in-house, but instead of you paying for all these fees, we're going to, we could do market plus half a percent or whatever."
And maybe I should say one other thing, too, is that, again, going back to my contract, I tried to write it so it was flexible, you could go one of three different ways. And I had made an assumption that, once you get the petition, do you know where, where the petition stands? Okay, so, you, you don't owe me anything if you never get a petition. My contract effectively becomes effective once you get the petition. And at that point, I could run numbers for you and gather the cost of issuance to say reasonably, this is what your rate would be, this is what it would look like, even if you did go out and get a rating. Because that, that's the other thing, is that at the end of the day, possibly, you're not doing them a favor by internally financing. And that is one thing that I could do for you, is make sure that you've seen all of the costs and what the comparison looks like. Oh, my point is that you don't have to make that decision today.
Yeah, I was just trying to get some information.
Yeah.
As far as doing it in-house, if, if there was, you know, if it was beneficial to us, I mean, if it's not beneficial, and.
How quick, Larry, how quickly, the other NIDs, I mean, they're not, they're, they're just even, they're, they're nowhere.
The numbers, you know, our first estimate, pardon you.
Okay, so they're not even, they're not even remotely close to.
And Rush Creek, we were going to have, the staff and I were going to have a meeting with them, but they backed out on their last one.
Okay.
I'm not sure, again, we've not been in contact with the subdivision that's been individuals, all that subdivision that's been.
Okay.
Like work so far.
So, basically, it's, this one we just need to look at?
This one, the landowner, Black Moos, again.
Oh, and I guess I should mention that, too, that just doing a bond issue generally takes sixteen to ninety days. And, but the NID has ordinances and hearing dates, and so I, I think you must have to assume it's going to take at least ninety days, if not longer.
At one time, we talked about funding, at least covering the construction costs, and then only doing one bond sale. That's what we talked with you all in the past about. We fund, that's what we've done on the other NIDs, it saves you two, two sales, is the way I understand.
You are correct.
If we fund it upfront, and then once the project's done, the bond sold, the county gets reimbursed for all their expenses, and it's assessed to the property owner.
And to the extent that you can afford to do that, which is fun, funding through the construction period, I, I would strongly recommend that. The other options, as far as the two phases of funding, I didn't even talk about that, that's just plain old ugly. And it makes sense on a big project, but on a little one like this, no, ideally, you don't want to do that. You'd have to basically do a private placement and then refinance.
Right. That's what Tony explained it.
Yeah.
If, if we can fund it through the construction, which would be during.
Sixteen to ninety days.
Sixty, ninety days, one summer, we'd be able to get this constructed, and then turn in the information, and then we'd be reimbursed for that.
As a, as a property owner out there, I mean, even though maybe it might come in at a higher rate, and they, they pay it in advance, I mean, does that, does that potentially save them dollars?
Yeah, if they, if they pay upfront, they only owe the principal amount. They don't owe any interest.
But, but once it starts, I mean, so say somebody, in the first year, they decide they just want to pay it off after a year's time, does it save them anything?
Yeah, the interest cost. And so, then it's a question of, of alternatives. If I'm looking at this, is this, okay, so this one, this first one I'm looking at, it has a total assessment, I assume that's the twenty-year period, of like seventeen thousand. They can pay the seventeen thousand, or they can pay it amortized at an interest rate over twenty years.
I see.
So, it's a matter of choice, then, I don't know. Let's just say hypothetically, it's two thousand dollars a year. Do I prefer to pay seventeen thousand now, or two thousand a year? Now, a lot of people will choose, even though they're saving on the interest, would choose not to prepay, because how many people own the same house for twenty years?
Right.
So, the assessment goes with the house.
Now, I think, to take that one step further, if we get into five years, it's twenty-year note, can the person at that time, once it's assessed, I think, you said within a year.
But you're only paying the interest every year, right?
It's twice a year, semi-annual payments.
Right.
Yeah. But it, I think, Chris, at least the way I understood, they've only got that 30-day period.
That is correct.
To make that decision, either go or no go. If they don't go, they've gotta pay that over 20 years. There's no buyout in the middle.
Or locked into the interest at that point. So that 30-day is your time period to choose one way or the other. Once you've chose to make annual payments, you have to pay the interest.
So the, the interest is included for 20 years after the 30-day period?
Right.
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 You can't, it's not like a car loan or a house loan, you can't go in and pay it off.
Yeah, you can't go. We can't.
You've gotta pay the interest, everything.
They theoretically, they could, in five years from now, if they wanted to fully pay it off, they could pay off all of the principal coming due, and all of the interest coming due. But it's not a prepayment, where it's just paying the principal.
Right.
They have to pay the full remaining loan amount.
As you're, I'm assuming they're revised upon, guaranteed that.
As far as I know, it has nothing to do with the bond itself, because that could be built in. As far as I know, it's statutory.
Okay. I just, I didn't know if you understood that, and that's why I wanted to make sure. That they only have that 30-day period to make that decision.
And some of them choose to get financing somewhere else.
That's what I'm thinking, yeah.
And how they pay it off in that 30 days, that's up to them.
Yeah.
Yeah. Whether they do it out of pocket, or through a private loan, or whatever. They just have that 30 days, they have to have that.
That's all the questions I had. I mean, I was just, it just seemed like if we could keep some of those costs, but it doesn't sound like that would work. But, you know, if we could charge a, a higher rate, and, and keep the, keep the interest on it, I mean, it's 20 years, yeah.
Yeah, charge the market rate, too.
Well, but if we do it in-house, I don't, I mean, unless it says by statute that we have to charge market rate.
Bond, bond counsel would take that position. But what I was saying before is that if you do it in-house, as opposed, if you do it in-house, it's a non-rated security, as opposed to having a rating like Jefferson County's.
Mm-hmm.
And so that in and of itself means it's going to be a higher rate than a double-A security. Your rating is a double-A.
I see.
That's why I'm with doing it in-house, if these other two come before us, and you're, and we got a lot of stuff coming down the pipe that we're gonna need money.
You just said you bought the bonds.
Well, I buy bonds, yeah.
Yeah?
I like, it's a good investment.
So why, why, why would you buy them and the county not buy them?
It's a, it's a good investment.
Yeah. So why would you buy them and the county not buy them?
Sam's got a lot more money than the county.
Well, obviously. Got too much money. So maybe he'd loan us the money for it.
First, well, I'm, yeah, all right. That might be a conflict. I don't, I don't, I don't think, Joe gave me a look, I better not.
I don't, I don't have a problem with telling anybody, no. I mean, you know, if you can do one NID, and you can make a little bit of money on the interest, I mean, yeah, but we can't do them all.
No, I think NIDs are great. I think it's a way to improve our county, and...
I mean, there's no way we could do Parkview Meadows. I mean, there's no way. So, or, you know, or maybe any of the others. But, but there's a, there's a cost associated with us doing it, because it's an unrated security. So it's gonna be a higher interest rate. So, you know, maybe they want us to do it, maybe they don't.
Well, do you guys...
But it's gonna, it's gonna save them money.
Well, and that's my point. I think that's your obligation, is, once you get the petition, is to let me run a series of numbers, so you can kind of see what it looks like. And that way, you're doing the right thing, as far as the homeowners are concerned.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, why don't we do that?
Would you like to entertain Joe, Joe Hunt?
Joy.
It's okay.
Joy's sorry, contract today, or do you want to wait till the petition is done?
Wait.
Yeah, I think let's, let's, let's...
There's no reason to do it today, right?
Yeah.
Once we get a petition, then we can go with it from there. Today's more of informational thing, right?
Yeah.
So we can think about it, then we can talk about it some more later on.
I've been on the other end of the NIDs, in the past when we've done them. I've been on the construction side, and Chris Arnold was there at that time. So this is new to me, as well as to you all. You know, Warren and James have been through it, so.
Yeah.
Took care of it after the petition, everything, it was done and signed, and took over the construction part of it when I was a county engineer. So going through this, and then now, Mel Clark and stuff, you know.
A lot of midwork.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Diamond was here, I think, was the last one we did, so it's been a while.
Well, I think it's great that we've got some of our communities, some of our subdivisions that want to, want to make improvements. So we need to encourage it and work with them, and...
Well, and I think, in my opinion, I think that's what we would be doing, by, if we could over to fund the construction, you know, that saves you a lot of that percentage of cost during that, they don't have to go through two sales.
Yeah.
We're able to do it. We get our money back after the construction's done. And we'll guarantee, as long as everything falls into place, you know, and the petition's done, and that's what we've tried doing, is making sure we have conservative investments, and when we get the bids in, everything is a go. So, you know, that's where we're at with that, so.
Okay.
Well, thank you for having me.
Thank you.
And I've enjoyed working with you. Hope to be continuing in the future.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's go back to the agenda approval and signing of MO LPHA mutual aid system agreement. Sorry, Chris.
That's a long name. So this is just a mutual aid agreement that the Department of Health and Senior Services has coordinated with other local public health agencies. So basically, if there was a situation like Joplin that happened here in Cole County, or happened in a county that needed help, we would be able to provide aid, or we would be able to request aid, and...
Hey, Larry.
And we would be able to get reimbursed, like if FEMA dollars came into play. It's basically just a mutual aid agreement for all of the local public health agencies in the entire state.
How do we get reimbursed? Is there a rate set?
No, because FEMA's gonna probably determine that based on what we do and what resources we provide.
So we don't know what's an allowable rate, or any of that? We have to charge FEMA's rate?
And I think it depends on, you know, if, if we just, if a county asks us to help out, and we don't, if there's no FEMA dollars, then we would not get reimbursed. But that also means that if we needed help, and some other counties stepped in to help us, they wouldn't expect to get reimbursed either.
So what's the benefit to even signing this, because we did something retroactive the other day?
Oh, well, I guess the benefit is if we had a tornado or earthquake here tomorrow, and, or, you know, after this was all in effect, and I said, you know, Boone County, and Osage County, and, I'm trying to think of another big one, you know, St. Louis County, I need help, I need environmental inspectors, because one's deserting me, and I need someone to go in and check these food establishments, or I need this, they would send their staff and not ask, how am I gonna get reimbursed for this? If we couldn't cover the disaster that we had, we would get help.
I will say, these are pretty strong. When I was at DPS, we worked with State Emergency Management, and there's all kinds of mutual aid agreements around the sheriff's party to some of them. You have the fire service, I think she has a task force, one out of Boone County. In fact, they go to other states. And so this is not anything atypical or unusual. Plus two, it doesn't obligate Kristi to do it.
Yeah, we could say no.
If she decides, somebody wants help, and her resources are way too strained, she can respond back. We don't have the resources to help you with this.
Yeah, I think, weren't we at one time supposed to send an ambulance to Ferguson when, which was a little different, but, which was, yeah, a little different, but it's still the same. It's, it's kind of like mutual aid, so...
Well, what I would say, this just sets up the legal framework for her to be able to do it and be reimbursed.
Yeah.
And it also provides protection for her people over there, because there's an agreement with Boone County for you to come up there. So as far as liability goes, that helps her out, because she does have legal authority to be exercising the same activities as people from the Health Department at Boone County would be doing.
Yeah. No, I, I don't have any problem with that, at all. I would entertain a motion to approve it.
So moved.
Just hurry up, that's...
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Cole County Health Department staff discussion.
Any more questions?
I know we missed accounts payable review.
For approval of accounts payable.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
So where were we at on that? We were gonna eliminate a position, or you're moving, one of them was, I was fine with, because you're gonna move her up to the position.
Mm-hmm.
But the other one, I don't see how you can reduce somebody's pay if it doesn't work out.
I don't have, I, I'm not concerned that it's not gonna work out. My only concern is that we might not be able to get by without refilling that vacancy. And I'm 90...
Yeah, that's what I mean. You need that vacancy. Basically, you'd have $21,000 left to hire somebody fill that vacancy if you needed to.
Right. Right. That's what the person that's in it now is making. And actually, I mean, my overall savings is 25.9. If I needed to refill that position at 21, I'd still have a surplus of $4,000.
We'd still have the savings, okay. I forgot the math. We had them going back and forth the other day. They were emails, Sam, I don't know.
I read all those emails. I talked to Christie a couple times, and I'm, I'm, I'm okay.
And like I said, I, I have confidence that they can do the, the duties. I'm just a little worried about leaving that position vacant, but I'm 95% sure that we can get by without it.
Yeah, I would try it if you have to fill it.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it. I just don't like lengthy email discussions to take place. And anyway, if, if we got concerns over different things, I, I just want to put it on the agenda and make sure that we talk about it here. I mean, I, I talked to Christie, too. I don't really have a problem with this. I just don't like to see a ton of emails bouncing back and forth, and over a lot of different things. So, anyway, I'm good with it.
Yeah, I don't know if we need a motion for it or anything, do we?
No, I think we already talked, we...
We gotta sign that, that, they're saying that's what's going on with it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christie. Okay, and we did Joy Howard, signing of the Deputy Sheriff's Salary Supplemental Fund Grant Application.
I think Gary's still on the issues they need to know.
Yeah, a little bit, like Greg has been, so.
This agreement is statutory. The sheriff's collecting extra $10 per civil process, and that goes into a state fund, which is then redistributed among different sheriff's departments, that you have to apply for the money. And a board composed of sheriffs makes that determination. Then the Department of Public Safety processes the funds. Well, they wrote up this grant, this is an application, it doesn't obligate us. It's just to apply for the money. And they stuck in an indemnification clause, which, Sam, you weren't here before, but Jeff and Chris know, that I don't like, and the sheriff does not like. So, the sheriff and I have been working over at the Capitol to see if we can do something about this problem. The sheriffs who are on the most smart board, who made the, who are supposed to be the ones making the determination for who gets how much money, had no clue what was in it. DPS just stuck that in there. So there is a possibility that the sheriffs will tell them, we're taking this out. But in the meantime, we have to apply for the money, because Betsy is due when?
It's due on the 30th, April 30th.
Okay.
And there's a spot there where it says, I've read the provisions, and I agree, yes or no. And Betsy checked no.
Mm-hmm.
And we put in, we object to that indemnification provision. So it could be pulled out. And if it isn't, you all can decide if you want to sign it next time, anyway.
As I say, even if we get the grant, or whatever, we can decide if we want to accept it.
Right, yes.
That's correct.
Let's go ahead and apply for it. I'm fine with that.
Absolutely. And right now, Sheriff White has been in contact with Mick Covington, who is the executive director of Missouri Sheriff's Training Academy.
Okay, Gary's got probably an update.
Oh, right now, Sheriff White's in contact with Mick Covington, who is the director of Missouri Sheriff's Association, who helped kind of put all this together in order to make this happen. He's currently had several meetings as of before he left to go to Arkansas at the State Capitol, and trying to get that language out of that contract removed. And basically, what the contract says is if something was to happen, or the county would be sued, then Cole County would be responsible for providing the legal lawyers and things like that to cover for someone was sued, saying they didn't get enough money from the fund, or what have you. And DPS, they're, they have a whole slew of attorneys that should be taking care of this, and not Cole County. So that's basically what Greg is fighting.
In the deputy's office.
Yeah. That's what Greg is fighting right now, in reference to this fund. The fund is great, the deputies needed, as far as, but as far as Cole County incurring the total responsibility for providing, if something were to happen, or some sort of lawsuit, to defend it, that should be DPS.
But this is, as Jeff pointed out, we may as well go ahead and apply for it, because it's gone, it's gone anyway.
Yeah.
As per the grant, we've gotten $100 per deputy in the past. In the past, we've always asked for $200 a month, and so we went ahead and did that. So if you don't ask for it, you can't get it. But they normally knock it down to $100 a month. And then, last year, they had the clause in there, if you make over $50,000, you weren't eligible. But I went ahead and go ask for those people again, just in case that clause is not in there this year. But it's simply just that, it's the $100 a month, plus the Medicare, FICA benefit, their loggers benefit, their SERF benefit, and workers' comp benefit that we would be reimbursed for.
The $100 includes all those benefits, plus?
No. The $100 is what they get towards their salary, plus the benefits that we get reimbursed for.
And what is that total?
Um, it's the...
It's $133,000 total, or something like that.
Actually, it's the next quarter, I think.
No, that's, that's staying.
So where, so this grant is just for roughly, what, $133 per person, roughly?
Monthly.
Roughly.
Monthly.
Monthly.
That we pay out and we get reimbursed for at 100% cost.
Did you say, you knew what the whole grant was?
I thought it was 133,000 total.
So for all counties, though, or?
That's just for Cole County, sir.
Cole County. So where does...
136 is what it is for the, is just for the deputies. The total cost of the grant is 166,452.72.
Total reimbursement of?
Total reimbursement. And we don't get money back until we pay for it, so we give 100% back.
So where does the, the $10 with the $5 coming back, where does that come into play on this? Does that come into play on this grant at all?
We pay them...
You said we get a $10, they charge a $10 fee, and we, and they're supposed to get $5 back into the...
No, that's not what I said. I said, the civil process, this is a statute that says they add an extra $10 per charge for civil process.
Yeah, when we go out and serve civil... Yeah, when we go out and serve civil papers, our civil service fee.
And that $10 is, is sent back to the state to go into this Deputy Sheriff's Salary Supplementation Fund. So it's a state fund, and it was originally designed, actually, I worked on the legislation with Mick Covington when I was at DPS, because some of these small counties, their deputies are making 20,000 a year, or whatever, and they're having a hard time getting personnel, it was originally designed to assist the poor counties, but not all of them meet the requirements to get money back, which is why counties like ours end up getting money back.
That's correct.
I mean, we have no choice but to collect that money.
Yeah.
If the sheriff didn't, he'd probably be, have a co-action filed on him from the AG's office, or Richardson, um, so, our only issue was, can we live with that li, that liability indemnification, I mean, they, how many years have we been doing this, like, when this was going to effect?
Ever since.
2007, 2008?
It's about four years.
So, and right now, just applying for it, doesn't...
Four years, 2002.
But if we don't apply for it...
It's gone.
We started doing it whenever I came over, I started collecting the money back. Yes, but started getting the grant.
So we need to apply for it, and then you're still working, we're still working on changing it?
And if they don't change it, we can have that discussion too.
Yeah.
After talking with Sheriff White, if, if they, they do not change the, the language on it, there'd be no way...
Wow.
There'd almost be no way that we could sustain the liability for it, and so we, more than likely, I don't know what the sheriff will do, but it'd be something we have to look at, opting out of it, if we have to sue the liability board, and that's insulin liability for all the sheriff's departments of the state of Missouri, not just ours for this cause.
Yeah, there's more of them figuring out, too, the uproar is gonna keep going.
That's right.
Well, I think if we, if this has to be submitted on 30th, I think we better go ahead and approve it.
How many of the deputies get this?
As of today, or that we applied for?
Just roughly?
As of today, it's, I think we have 53 people on the grant receiving the funds, 53 to 55.
Man, I generally don't have a problem with this, I mean, I, I got a problem with the way that, the whole thing's done, I mean, the $10 fees charged, and, and then it's a redistribution of the wealth to, to pay deputies all over the state, I mean, I just, you know, it seems like it, it's a good way to, for it to work, but, I mean, when we got civil deputies out there serving the papers, yeah, maybe we're a fortunate county, but, and some other people are unfortunate, but it's, uh, I don't know, we got people making laws that just try to help other people, and it doesn't, doesn't really work, so...
I'd say it's helping the smaller counties that do apply for it and are eligible to get it, I mean, some of those guys, like you said, only make $20,000 a year, and their counties can't afford anymore.
I think Osage County, where they have eight, eight total on their sheriff's department.
And even so, then, we still have, here at the Cole County Sheriff's Office, just, we still have officers who want public assistance, food stamps and things like that, and that's what the supplemental fund is for, is in order to help them with, with insurance costs and everything, and thank God, did you guys cover a lot of that for the deputies, but it's still, you know, at what we're paying, if you have your whole family on it, the $100 a month goes a long way. And that's here in Cole County, we make a whole lot more money than probably 70% of the county.
Oh, yeah. I entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And just keep us informed as to what's going on.
Absolutely.
How much more we got on here?
Okay.
Long things.
First reading of budget adjustment number five.
This is, again, no action needed today, it's for actually Sheriff's Department grant for the Mustang, it's 107,000.
Thanks, Betsy, thanks, Gary.
Thank you.
And we'll just hold it over till 10 days.
Okay. Mr. Chris? Is that proposal for appraisal services?
Chris, are they still having that BOE training Tuesday?
You know, I haven't heard any more on that.
I hadn't either, trying to figure out what's going on with it.
I would hope they would, but I'll try to send an email to the Tax Commission when I get back over to the office.
See what time it is and stuff, I was gonna try to make it come through yet.
Questions, comments, we need to hire somebody to get these appraisals done, it's gotta be a general certified. What else do you need to know? Questions, I mean, we've gotta have value, because it's a reassessment year, these are the ones that are most likely to go to appeal, in fact, one of them are almost positive it will, and you can see by the time limit they've given us to make a decision on this, and it takes a while to get the information ready.
What, what kind of dollars are we talking about, Chris?
Well, um...
Do we know, or is it just an hourly rate, or?
Basically, it's a, this one is basically per, per appraisal, and, see, for the first one there, they've got a range, the fee would be between 1,500 and 2,000 for a restricted use, which would basically give us the value that we need for this year's reass, reassessment. If we find out that they're gonna go to the BOE, they can also do a short summary, which would be another $600, if it's gonna go on to the State Tax Commission, the total could be 4,000 to 6,000, and it's very much like the one that we contracted with Dave Nun for last year.
We don't have to bid these, 'cause it's a service, is that?
Right. In fact, there's a court case that said, out of St. Louis County, that says that assessment services are professional services, appraisal services, that's what it was, appraisal.
I've got another company I've talked to with another list that I haven't heard back from yet, but hopefully I will soon, these were the, I would call them the five most pressing, pressing issues right now, and I've done business, or we've, the county's done business with, with the Nun Company before, that's who did the appraisals last year, and they, they do a good job, and quite honestly, there just isn't hardly any general certified appraisers around anymore, I mean, I think we've got, I know of two, and I think we might have one more here in Jeff City, and then there's another company that does appraisals, but they only have residential, and they contract with a company in Columbia to come down here and do the general stuff.
Yeah, no, we need to do it local.
Yeah, well, they've made it so difficult to become general certified anymore, I mean, you gotta have a four-year degree, plus 300 hours of training, plus 3,500 hours of appraisal work over a period of 36 months, I think.
So do we, do we have money in professional services or something to cover this?
Yes, we do.
So what do you need from us, just?
Just, well, just your approval to get into the contract, is my understanding, just to sign off on it.
You have our blessing.
More or less, well...
Because you're obligated to count.
Okay.
And Chris can sign it, too.
Okay.
Sam can sign it.
Yeah, and that's just basically what we're looking at today. Is just, you know, I'm informing you, and you're saying that you give your blessing or whatever to this, that it's legal and proper, and you, your office, you all sign off on it too, anything you can add about the process that we need to do for this?
Yeah, we're contracted.
Yeah.
So is this with the Nun Company again?
Yes, yes. Basically, we need one of you all to sign, I need to sign, and then, I guess Kristin, and then I need to get the original back to the Nun Company.
And Steve has to sign off.
Steve also, yes, and they're, it was sent by email, so, they all had the blue signature on them, so whichever one we wanna use as the original.
Well, we can do two originals, if you don't mind.
No, that's fine, yeah, yeah, that would be great, that would be great.
Chris, this is the same contract you sent me a few days ago.
Yes, yes, it is.
I move we approve the contract with the Nun Company for appraisal services.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen, and the reason we had to move on it so fast was because he said if we, if he didn't get something by the 29th of April, he couldn't guarantee that we're gonna have the end product by 29th of June, and July 1st is certification date.
Got anything else?
No, just admin stuff, all right, we need to schedule another meeting for admin meeting, and I was looking at May 14th, if that would work with you guys, I'll make sure that's good.
You want both of them signed?
If you would, I think it's good. And then we can keep on and get the Nun Company.
And I'll go ahead and contact the Nun Company today, and let them know that it's been approved.
Okay.
You wanna do it after our commission meeting that day?
Yes, I thought you had anything I wanted to say about that.
Noon, I guess.
Once we get everybody to sign off, you just send me a copy of it.
It'd take his mom to the hospital, or the doctor, or something. I'm okay with 14.
Yeah, I think that's, that's fine.
I don't care.
Okay, that's all I have.
Any other business? Move recess till 4:30 PM.
That one?
Do you have any problems?